This way, but tonight is very homegrown group. We're always happy to take talent from Lasco or Bakersfield or wherever it comes to us from. But it's always especially fun when we see members of our community who are able to help us achieve the mission of the department. So the first person I would like to introduce you to is Naieli Puente. Naieli has been hired as a tutor. She graduated from Shafter High this year and is currently attending Cal State Bakersfield with the plans to become a nurse. The second tutor is Monica Ramirez. Monica is originally from Juana Huato, Mexico. She came here after high school, lives in Shafter, has been learning English and pursuing her education, also planning on becoming a nurse. Next, we have Daniel Mendoza. If Daniel looks familiar, his mother is Lorena Mendoza, who is the muralist. And Daniel was helping with the mural across the street from the Learning Center. Daniel graduated from Shafter High in 2020, and he's currently attending Bakersfield College and pursuing a business administration major. Daniel also took some college classes since he was in high school, Shafter High, through the dual enrollment program and in the summer. And next, we have a teacher, Nada Canales. She's a graduate of Shafter High. She also graduated of Cal State Bakersfield and plans to earn a master's degree and then go on to teach at the college level. And I just learned today that Nada and our next teacher are lifelong friends from childhood. Paula Garcia graduated from Shafter Schools and then attended Cal State Bakersfield where she participated in a number of programs related to her work as a teacher. She continues to, she plans to continue in the education field. And this is, you know, for both of them, this is really a great opportunity to hone their skills as teachers. And we're really looking forward to putting them to work in not only teaching, but also helping us to develop some new programs around literacy and science. And we're just really thrilled with this whole group. So thank you for letting me introduce you to them.
I have one question. Have they worked with us before? Any of them?
You mean as like students or?
Or volunteered or whatever.
No, none of this group.
Friend knew, very good. Well, we're excited. You tell them we welcome them very much.
All right. Well, thank you.
Will they be at the open house that's coming up this week too?
You know, I don't know their schedule. They are working, so we will have, you know, some staff at the open house. I'm not sure if this group will.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay, public comment time. This is the time that anyone can come forward to speak to us about anything that is not on the agenda. Any comments? Oh my, well, we'll just talk. We'll talk louder then. Just give us your name and your address.
Oh, got it. Thank you guys for the job you do. I just want to bring something to your attention. It's really irritating me. And I got a letter here a few weeks ago regarding the anti-siphon valve that fills my pool. I don't know if you've been aware of the incident or not. Came from the office of the Utilities Director. And everybody that's got a pool in Shafter that has an automatic filler had to have it tested. The only problem is the anti-siphon valve that feeds all of our pools can't be tested. There's no way. So when I called the guy out, he didn't know. He came out there and it ended up costing me $300 for something that was not inspected, can't be inspected. And I suppose all the people that had similar issues with their pools, like me, ended up doing the same thing. I talked to my neighbor this morning behind me. She got the letter and she doesn't have an anti-siphon filler. But she's concerned because the threat of the letter says that if we don't get this done, we're going to shut your water off. Now, I don't like threats. I don't think anybody in this room likes threats. And I sure as hell didn't think to the city of Shafter to give me a threat for something until I got an opportunity to see what was going on. And I've checked around the county and nobody else has done this or has been asked to do it. So I don't know what the deal is, but I'm pretty upset with the director of utilities of the threatening letter for something I couldn't control and doesn't exist to start with.
Okay, could you give us your name and your address for the record?
My name?
Yes, sir.
You don't remember, huh?
Arnold.
Richard Arnold. Last name is A R N A L L. 297 Pine Street.
Right. Okay, now.
Now you remember.
You know, I said Arnold. I realize your name, but you needed to give it for the report. Now, would you like our staff to come forward and give you some more information about it? Did you ever talk to anybody that was connected with Public Works locally?
No.
Okay, well, Michael, you want to come forward?
Well, that's basically all it is. I just wanted, I assumed that you, by now, somebody could go to complain beside me. But what bothers me is I don't care about the money so much, but the fact that the Utilities Director should know, I would think, if he worked for me, would, that you can't test an anti-siphon valve. There's no way humanly possible to do it. And the test that they referred to, when I asked the guy that came by, he says, oh, this is for, we do this for commercial. I don't know exactly what that means, but I know there's a transfer valve that they have to make sure the water can't flow backwards. And the systems that we use, that are used for pools are on a float valve. I, but almost everybody, I'm sure no one understands what I'm talking about when I say float valve. I see heads nodding, so I, well, I grew up as a kid on a chicken ranch. Must have had 20 or 30 of those things. And not one float valve that we ever missed, whatever was underwater for anything. So how can an anti-siphon valve siphon something that it doesn't even touch? It's not underwater, it never has been and it never will be. I mean, that's just, that's just more of my whining. I'm sorry.
No, that's right. Now, Mr. Arnold, you want us to respond now or you want to talk to our staff after, what might make it easier for you?
I can't hear you, Kathy.
I know. Michael, come forward and see if you can. Because he may just choose to have you talk to him after, or you can do it publicly.
That would probably be the more constructive thing to do, that I can get his information and follow up with him first thing tomorrow morning.
Yes, well, you might mention it.
Are you the utility?
No, he works for me, but I can, either one of us can work with you.
Oh, the problem's over with. I mean, I've had the guy take care of it and everything is done, but it was wrong, the way it was done. And I don't know about anybody else in town, but I was pretty upset. And my neighbor that I talked to this morning, that doesn't even have one, got the same letter. And she's really upset because she hasn't been able to get a hold of anybody to resolve her problem. The fact that she doesn't have anything to do with it. She fills her pool by a garden hose or a faucet.
Right.
So.
Right, okay. Well, do you know if that's been resolved, her situation?
No, she, no, she was, I suggested she call the city and I don't know if she did or not.
Yeah, she can, well, you can give me her information too. We'll call her directly.
She lives right behind me.
Okay, a name and number would be good, but just so I can make sure I'm talking right.
I don't have.
Okay.
Rosie's her name, that's as far as I can go. I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting this. I had a product. But you can swing by my house and.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Does the council have any questions of Public Works or at this point?
Well, I don't because you, we've already discussed it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the council have questions on it?
Are you getting this call up?
Mayor Pro Tim Givens, and within the last week or two, we've received a lot of calls. I received a call from the chapter press. And certainly, there is, there is some confusion. But backflow devices, the type that we're targeting can be tested. And it's a state mandate to get tested to prevent pool water from getting back into the water main. When he references commercial testing, yes, businesses, industries have backflow devices that get tested. And what's happening now is the state is now focusing on pool anti-siphon valves. And so we have a record of who has pools, but we don't have a record of who has anti-siphon valves. So in the notice, and maybe that didn't get translated or that didn't get presented accurately enough. But those with, who don't, who have a hose or don't have an auto fill line, aren't subject to this requirement. And we'll be happy to pay that person a visit if they don't have an anti-siphon valve to verify they don't have it and take them off the list permanently. So we're kind of navigating those who don't and those who have it. And it's been a bit overwhelming, but it's overwhelming for everybody, not just staff, but also the residents. So we're doing our best. I think there has certainly been some confusion because this is the first time we've kind of tackled this challenge. But it is a state mandate, and it's something that we're trying to implement with as minimal inconvenience and cost to the residents as possible.
Well, the letter did say call Public Works and, you know, had they done that right from the start. But I know I had a call and you could understand why there was concern about it. It just needed more, have more clarification.
Well, for the record, it does allow the city to terminate a service if this isn't ultimately completed. It's not our mission to turn people off. And so, but it's our mission to kind of start some dialogue and figure this out. And so we, we're not on the verge of shutting anybody off. We're just now starting to document what's subject to the rule, what's not subject to the rule. And we'll give it some time and we'll have, certainly have follow-up notices and dialogue before we do anything drastic. I can assure you.
Mike, I just have one quick question. So you're telling me those, those that don't have one and those that do have one, those that have one have to pay? And those that don't have one, don't have to pay, correct?
Right, because nothing to test then.
So eventually at some point, do those that don't have one have to get one?
Think of it.
Not, if they get an auto fill, if they plumb in an auto fill system to their pool, yes. And that would be more than likely addressed during a building permit phase, especially if they're building a new pool. But it might, it might fly under the radar. But anyway, but if they have an auto fill line, then they have to have preventative backflow device to prevent pool water from getting back into the water main.
Okay.
And so I had a gentleman stop by City Hall last week. Who was looking at a very costly addition to his auto fill line to add that backflow device. And I said, well, you don't have to, but you can just rely on a hose and do it manually. And then you're not subject to the rules. So, but at least you have a choice. And so he's that particular person that's considering his options right now.
Which the hose, which the hose bit will have that anti-siphon valve, the backbreaker there as well, right?
It's essentially the same thing.
Right, but it's just the hose, the hose bit will.
The hose, well, as long as you have with, a filling with a hose provides air gap. There's no link, plumbing link between the pool and your water service.
Also, didn't it say in the letter that you have to repeat it every year?
Yes. And I will say that this is being implemented throughout the county, I know for a fact. I mean, I know several residents in Bakersfield that are, have already been subject to this the past year or two. And it's just now getting into our community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions at this time? Come forward. Give us your name and your address.
Don, 404 East Los Angeles. I would like to express thanks to a couple of people. And it's late in coming. I wanted to, sorry, for the public, council meeting, that I was not aware of the council being consulted for that. But I would like to thank two people and like to by extension, thank the people with the, first of all, I'd like to say, thank. We thought through a rough year and I, I know everyone here, I get mad when you build. But I would like to say a fair, first of all, for many years, the service, second, I.
Specifically to helping put our city on a very solid foundation. And I think we've all been cognizant of that as, as we've watched things that have unfurled over the last, over the last year. And I think the fact that we're in such good shape testifies to wisdom, leadership, and sound judgment. And so I would like very much to thank Mayor Proust and those that have been a part of this. Secondly, I'd like to thank our police department. I'm not, I've never been a cop on the street, but I'm somewhat familiar with police work. I served for a number of years as a lieutenant in a military police unit reserve. And so while I'm not a cop, never have been, I have, I'm very much aware of police work and how it's conducted. And I've been amazed. It's just, I supervised. And so it's natural for me to watch police in action. And what I have observed of Shafter Police Department, I am, I think is excellent. I'm sure it's not without faults. I'm sure there's problems that have arisen. I'm sure there's a lot that we don't know. But in watching over a number of years, the professionalism, the courtesy, the, the manner in which things are done, I would like to thank our police department. And I hope that that, that will be extended to the guys on the street. I know that there's a good attitude. And again, I know it's not perfect, but I know there's a good attitude out there. And I think we as, in the crazy times that we're living in, I think we in Shafter have a sense of security that a lot of places do not have. And I know I'm on the clock and I'll close with this. But to demonstrate that, I'd like to tell you about a friend of mine. I have a friend, a young man, quite young. I don't know if he's quite 30 years of age or not, but a real go-getter. He and his wife have one child, one small child. They're hoping to have more. He grew up in Shafter. Left Shafter to be involved in an ag manufacturing business. Rose through the ranks. He's the general manager of a fairly significant ag production company. He's in the process right now, or maybe has completed, I'm not sure, buying a house in Shafter to come back to Shafter. He will commute to his work. But he came, he comes to Shafter, and if you ask him why, he will tell you, I feel like my family is safe in Shafter. And so to our new assistant chief, and I think I'm very thrilled that she is our assistant chief. I want to say thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment time. We'll move on to council announcements and reports. Pete, do you have anything?
I attended the Lincoln Dinner in Bakersfield, and that was a fun night. And I got to meet quite a few people that you just normally see on TV. So it was a fun night and my wife and myself, we enjoyed it.
Okay, Caesar?
I don't have anything to report. It's been very busy for me, very busy time of work. It's like the gentleman spoke, it's been, it's been quite a ride here since the last year. And it's getting worse for us and my line of work, as it is out here in the streets, unfortunately. But I'm lucky even be here today, so that's it.
Good.
Wow, just want to say thank you to the council for, for hiring all those officers a year and a half ago. I know we're down to two per night. So thanks for, council for hiring all the officers that we have today.
Nothing big to report. We have a few tickets left for Peter Pan or Children's Summer Theater is putting on a show. So if you want to jump on and get there, shafterfordtheater.com and you can get some tickets. Livestream is also available.
You're good. How many kids are in it this year?
68.
68 children?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, from ages what?
They are first grade into incoming eighth graders.
Oh, fun.
Yes, it's a large cast.
Good, well, I look forward to it. Okay, the other item I wanted to mention, we did announce and had a chat with the city manager that was held last week on, well, July the 21st. And the topic was on budget. And I thought I brought a copy, and I'm not sure if all the council has seen it. Yes, I did. It was a one page that was prepared and there were unfortunately only two from the public and two, two staff members and myself that attended. And yet I felt like what was presented here and what was there was a good report and well received. So we tried, you know, we'll see if we have to do something else in the future. But, but you know what? It's been kind of a quiet one and with summertime coming, summertime here, it's not a whole lot going on. So that's all I have. Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. And on consent calendar, we have seven items. So the first one is approval of checks on payroll and then approval of minutes for July the 20th. We also have to approve a special events permit for the Shafter Symphony Orchestra that wants to do some music in the park on August the 22nd from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. The next item is the approval of a city-owned equipment as surplus property. And we have an updated list that was added to the agenda tonight. And so if you're interested, there's, for public sale, there's furniture as well as other office equipment available. Do we have a date for it? Yes. Oh, okay, okay. And also number six is to adopt the city of Shafter employee bi-weekly pay schedule. That's effective starting July the 1st. And then the last item was Resolution Number 2821, which is the intention to form a landscaping and lighting district for the new tract 7318, has 158 lots, and it's located on West Tillery. So if there are no comments, questions? Okay, question or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Espinoza to approve the consent calendar. Real call?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Prop?
Yes. Public hearing, the first item for public hearing is a CDBG Community Development Block Grant Project Funding Consolidation Hearing and Resolution.
Sorry, American Council, this is a routine ministerial item that we are required to do pursuant to HUD guidelines for our CDBG allocation. We are entitled, an entitlement city, and so thus the reason for the public hearing to get public input on the expenditure of the city's allocation. This evening, we have our Public Works Director making the staff report. Mike?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shap City Council. As you may recall, the city had planned to use $83,000 in community development block grant funds for improvements to the Shafter Aquatic Center. In fact, we bid a project that was going to entail a covered picnic area. But the, and this funding was programmed long before COVID and before the operations agreement with the rec district was terminated. So, you know, although talks are underway with the rec district and the local school districts to hopefully reopen the facility, realistically, that process is going to take several months to work out and ultimately have approved. So in the meantime, the city does have other worthwhile projects that qualify for CDBG funding that don't depend on an operations agreement. Facilitate the council's strategic planning and benefit a larger share of Shafter's population. So currently, there are four rounds of CDBG funding in play. Combined, they total about $400,000. And the past funding or the, the funding for the aquatic center was probably the oldest allocation, dates back four years. So council previously, for the other rounds of funding, the council previously authorized using that funding for improvements to core city parks. So rather than process and implement individual agreements for each individual allocation, staff has been pursuing consolidating those funds into one agreement for one project to implement. And so this, this saves a substantial amount of time processing agreements and implementing projects. As you can imagine, it puts the money to use much faster. And then it's very similar to what was done for the consolidation of funding that was done for the Veterans Park Football Field Lighting several years ago. So county staff, which oversees and manages the CDBG program for the city, has agreed to process a funding consolidation. And, but they require that we conduct a public hearing. And then at the close of that hearing, adopt a resolution that formally authorizes the funding consolidation. And they can act on that is early as September, if we take action tonight. So the hearing is scheduled for tonight. It's on tonight's agenda, obviously. It was previously noticed in English and Spanish leading up to tonight. And at the close of the hearing, we recommend that the council adopt a Resolution 2822. And it should be pointed out that the resolution was developed with the assistance of the city attorney. It has been endorsed by the county. And as drafted, it authorizes that all of the funding be utilized for recreational improvements at Veterans Park. That's how it's currently drafted. And the reason why we have that listed in there for consideration is that wording it that way allows us to work on projects that have been prioritized by the council and the public, which includes a basketball court and adding a field lighting to the soccer fields. So it's important to point out that, you know, the council can direct staff to amend the resolution for, and direct the funding to another project, probably should be a park site, to stay consistent with what we've done in the past. But just to point out, whatever project or projects the council desires, it's important to point out that it'll take several months to process agreement and get this in a position to make it shovel ready. More, more than likely, you're looking at about nine months from now, if the county follows through on processing the funding agreement following this resolution adoption. But that concludes my presentation. So at this time, we ask that you conduct the hearing, allow for public input. And at the close of the hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions. But otherwise, we request that you adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for anyone who cares to address the council for or against spending of community development block grant money. It's an opportunity to ask a question or to get some more information. Okay, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Okay, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. Council, have any questions?
I spent quite a bit of time at the park with the youth football programs, and there's a lot of stuff going on there, a lot of activities, so I think it would be something worthwhile to pursue.
One of my main issues with Veterans Parks always been the, the walkway, people from doing walkway around, they, they love to walk right there, and also there's no lighting around, that's, it's always been a complaint of, of the neighborhoods surrounding that area, lighting, since it's dark, shady characters hanging around, that's how, about, I've heard that quite a bit. I think lighting in that, in that park, it's, it's a big necessity in giving them an actual, an actual walkway instead of the one they made themselves. I think that's, that'll be a very good, very good thing to, to put these funds towards in the future.
The way, the way this resolution is drafted, it gives us the flexibility to do different scenarios. It doesn't commit to a basketball court, doesn't have commit to soccer field lighting. We can, we, and we're, we're not, we're not exactly on the verge of submitting an application, but, but it's feedback that, like that, that we can use before we submit the application, so, but again, the basketball court, the soccer field lighting, four hundred thousand dollars is not gonna cover all of that. But, and I'll certainly take the time to present you with some cost scenarios moving forward.
Thank you, Mike.
You know, just an added comment, I know when we finally put in the sidewalks around Mantle Park, you saw what happened, and we just unrealistically, so many people came out and you see them walking around there all the time, just like it is over there, so it would really be nice to consider that, because we've heard that before, Caesar. It's been often, and it, yeah, it may, must be, it must be the right time to do it. Yeah. Okay, any other comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Given, seconded by Councilmember Lopez to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-eight, Twenty-two.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Prop?
Yes. Very good, next item is the Don Pepe's Bar and Grill mural project.
So, American Council, we are asking to continue this item to date specific, August seventeenth. The municipal code, Chapter Seventeen, requires that we have a maintenance agreement with the owner, and at the time of the agenda was published, we, we're not able to complete that yet, we're still working with the city attorney's office in terms of the agreement itself. We have the draft now, so we'll need to work with the property owner to have that maintenance agreement. It's pursuant to the code section, so it is part of it. So we're asking to continue to the seventeenth, so that at that time, we have the agreement as part of this agenda.
Okay, so we'll just notice the continuation.
So we'll just open the public hearing and then continue to August seventeen.
Very good, okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing, and if you have any comments for or against mural project, some of it has already been started up on Don Pepe's restaurant, and he wanted to make sure that it was all approved as well as add another one, so if we have any comments, you may come forward at this time, or keep it even for next time. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and
Let's, let's leave the hearing open.
Okay, and we schedule for August the seventeenth, very good.
We should entertain a motion to continue to August seventeen.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to August seventeenth.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Given, seconded by Councilmember Lopez to continue to August seventeenth.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Prop?
Yes. And we'll move on to management reports, the first item is the League of California Cities Twenty-twenty-one Annual Conference Designation of Voting Delegates.
So, American Council, this is a ministerial item. We've learned that there are three of you proposing to attend the annual league conference, and to that, there is an item that is requested of us, and I'll have our city clerk provide that staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. Before you, we have an item for the League of California Cities Twenty-twenty-one Annual Conference Designation of Voting Delegate. On September twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, the League of California Cities will hold its annual conference in person in Sacramento. A special annual business meeting will be held on Friday, September twenty-fourth, for the league membership to consider and take action on resolutions that establish league policy. It is necessary for the council to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates. We recommend that you appoint a council member as a voting delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates to vote on proposed League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held September twenty-second through the twenty-fourth.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Just really quick, Mayor, to add is, three of you are attending, is yourself, Mayor Proud, Councilmember Lopez, and Espinoza, so among the three of you, you can select primary and then the two alternates. Exactly.
No, it doesn't start at seven A M., no, don't listen to that, guys.
I'm gonna suggest Mayor, Mayor Proud.
For the main one?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, we're gonna be there, so, and then we'll just put the two of you down for the alternates, okay. You want a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Espinoza, that we have myself as the delegate, and then the two alternates will be the other two attending delegates. All those motion, I mean, Roca?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Given?
Yes. Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Prop?
Yes. Okay, the next item is the purchase of a lift station from Romtech Utilities in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand for Central Valley Highway Lift Station upgrade.
Certainly, American Council, this is an item that's a part of the item you approved at the last meeting to issue the RFP for the construction and installation of the lift station works. I'll have our Public Works Director provide a staff report as to this item and what it pertains to.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shaft City Council, prior to the planned car wash development at the, near the corner of Central and Central Valley Highway, Public Works had been planning a upgrade to the sewer lift station that's near that intersection, in fact, it's in the, in the pavement right now. We specifically planned to relocate the lift station behind the curb into what is now the former Brookside Parking Lot. So the car wash project required us to redesign the plumbing and the location of the lift station, which we were fortunately able to do. Now that we have settled on a location, staff would like to proceed with the purchase of the new equipment that will be necessary for this project, and we received a proposal from Romtech Utilities to manufacture and deliver the equipment at an approximate cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's as of right now, that's still kind of a range, like, I think you've seen and heard first, you know, if you've heard and seen firsthand that the pricing for materials can fluctuate quite a bit lately, but we're pretty confident that three hundred and twenty-five thousand plus sales tax, which could get us as high as three hundred and seventy-five thousand, will cover this purchase ultimately. So it's been a past practice to sole source with Romtech Utilities, and this has been a practice for twenty years or so. They have a proven reputation for selling and supporting their products, and when you're dealing with the lift station, it's extremely important in that you have minimal downtime for maintenance and repair work, and Romtech has had a very positive working relationship with the city. And there's really few vendors that really offer the full lift station equipment package, we're talking the pumps, the control cabinets, and also the concrete pre-cast wet well, so that's very far to, hard to find, which, and having that available to us saves on the installation time and costs ultimately. So in general, we feel it's in the, the city's best interest to work with the company that has this type of product and this type of track record, so if approved, the delivery and installation of this material will still be several months out, we're coordinating with the developer of the car wash to make sure that our projects don't compete with each other, which is important, the ultimately, the lift station is going to serve the car wash development. It's also important, important to point out, this does not include installation. At your July twentieth meeting, the council authorized formal bid procedures for the installation work, and once we have bid results, we'll come back to you with the outcome and a, hopefully, an award recommendation, so for tonight, we're asking for authorization to purchase the equipment, and, and that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Okay, hearing then, we entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Given, seconded by Councilmember Lopez, Roca?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Espinoza?
Yes.
And Prop?
Yes. Has some city manager comments to report?
So, American Council, a few items this evening, one, we'd like to, we have previously proposed to you to have an economic development strategic plan workshop August seventeenth, prior to the regular meeting, and consulting with the facilitators that we had requested of Kern E D C Direct, Executive Director and his number-two person, they're not available on the seventeenth, so we'd like to ask council, you would be available September seventh? And start time would be three thirty?
What day of the week is that?
That's the regular council meeting, Tuesday, so it would be before, prior to the regular meeting at six. Three thirty, and we'll serve dinner for, for council, and we'll, shouldn't take about two hours.
Okay.
And then just a few reminders for some upcoming events, Friday, August thirteenth, twelve P M. is the new teacher luncheon hosted by the Quanis Club here at Veterans Hall, that's a twelve o'clock, I understand that's a popular event, and it takes place to welcome all the new teachers for the Richland School District, and so they've extended an invite, and so I just want to bring that to, to your attention. Also, that Saturday, August fourteenth, is nine A M. to noon, is Stop the Bus Event hosted by the Lions Club of Shaftor and Assembly Member Rudy Salas, it'll be held at the Dollar General Parking Lot. Again, I understand it's a very popular event, it's to raise school supplies for children of our community, and so that's scheduled for Saturday, the fourteenth, nine to twelve. We talked about the annual conference, September twenty-second and twenty-fourth. Also, September twenty-third at five thirty is the annual Kern E D C Dinner at J E H Ranch. Some of us won't be able to attend, because we'll be at the league, but if the other two council members, Mayor Pro Tim Given and Alvarado, you, you're interested in attending, please let the city clerk know so that we can make arrangements for you to attend. Also, November tenth, Kern County Energy Summit is scheduled for that day at seven thirty. If any of you are interested in attending, please let our city clerk know so that we can make reservations with adequate time, I know some of these events are a little far out, but some of them are popular, and RSVPs go pretty quick. Some city events, you took a selfie just before the meeting, next Friday, August thirteenth, the City Hall Selfie Day, and so we're proposing to have an event at City Hall next week, two to four? Two to four P M. next Friday, hopefully, most of you can attend. That means any from the public can stop by, take a selfie with you, or whatever the case may be, we'll have some ice creams available for, for the public, hopefully, some people will turn out and enjoy a chill day with them, with you.
That's this coming Friday or next Friday?
Next Friday, the thirteen, yes, Friday, August thirteenth, two to four P M. at City Hall, there in the courtyard open, open area. The question regarding the city rummage sale, that is scheduled for August sixteenth and seventeenth. That's next, a couple of weeks, Monday and Tuesday, from eight A M. to eleven A M. And my understanding from staff is, we usually have those during the week, and so we'll have two days of that. So anyone that's interested, we're also gonna push out all of this out in our social media platforms, so bring it, attention to it, and let the community know. Save the date, November twelfth, Employee Appreciation Dinner at the Shaftor Fourth Theater. So we are bringing it back this year. And then just really quick COVID update, vaccine update, Kern County continues to see a surge in cases this week compared to last week. Yet only thirty-nine cases are from the Delta variant countywide, those are the numbers we get from public health. At this point, we're just getting information from them, I think by now, most people or residents know where to get information from CDC or public health, so we're no longer pushing out information through our so, social media platforms. And so anybody that's interested can call us, and we'll refer them where to go get a resource, but otherwise, I think by now, most people are aware where to get their information from, so with that, that concludes my report, and we don't have any other director reports at this time.
Anyone have questions of staff? Okay. Need a motion to recess for closed session, which includes conference with labor negotiators, Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion by by Councilmember Alvarado, seconded by Councilmember Lopez, to go to a closed session, and it's six forty-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no, we are in closed session. I oppose no. We are in closed session.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier tonight, City Council recessed in a closed session. There was only one item on tonight's closed session agenda. It was conference with labor negotiators regarding the groups listed on the agenda. With respect to the groups listed, I should mention that the unrepresented employees were not discussed as part of this agenda matter. But with respect to the other employee groups, the city council heard a presentation from its negotiating team regarding the status of negotiations, and we have no report of action.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion now to adjourn. Caesar?
I'll make a motion to adjourn in a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn, and it is 7:35. Yes?